Good morning to everybody. I'd like to call the safety and security meeting to order March 10th, 2022. Myla, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Gladney.
President.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Beach. Or Winmiller. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Golladay. Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Pacello. Chair, you can proceed.
Fine, thank you. Next on the agenda is the introduction of Captain Pete Morrow of the Joint Task Force, and I think Kevin Scott, you're going to handle that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce, first and foremost, Pete, I know you guys were having some connectivity problems. Can you hear us okay? We can't hear you at all.
You might be muted.
Are you muted? Well, I'm going to move forward. We can see a smiling face, so I'm going to go ahead and move forward as to not delay the meeting. So Chief Gregory made some changes in structure within the County Police Department. And as part of those changes, Captain Webb was provided or reassigned to another area of their operation. And in exchange, Captain Pete Morrow is the new county police captain assigned to the MetroLink Police Task Force. As you're all aware, the St. Louis County and the St. Louis City contingent of that task force are housed together in a Delmar facility adjacent to our our Delmore's, our Delmore platform, and so they work very closely together. Captain Pete Morrow has certainly watched the changes that we've made here over the last two years from afar. He's well aware of the WSB process and the recommendations that we went through. And with his with his assignment to the task force, we will continue on that same trajectory with the relationship with the collaboration. And we'll continue to bolster that because that's so very important. What I want to stress is that everything that we do from a public safety standpoint, across the entire alignment, everything is built on collaboration. So Pete previously assigned to the Bureau of Communications, Planning and Analysis Unit, also the Central County Precinct and the Afton Southwest Precincts, as well as the City of Fit, and he brings an enormous amount of experience and knowledge to the task force. And I just want to again, give him a formal introduction to the board and to welcome him to our, to our team.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Captain, for being a part of that team. One question, Kevin, when you say that he's on, been up to speed as far as the program that we've been working on with the center, dispatch and everything, do you know if he's been briefed on all of that?
Yes, he has.
Okay. Very good. Is any of the other commissioners have any questions? I know we're having trouble with the captain, but maybe if you have anything Kevin can answer regarding the introduction of Captain Pete Morrow to the task force. Okay.
Commissioner, I'd just like to welcome the captain. Captain, welcome. This is Talby Roach. Haven't, haven't met you personally, but very much looking forward to keeping our, our role rigorous and collaborative. And as Commissioner Simmons mentioned, moving up on communications is one of our biggest goals. So however you can help with your expertise there, we've made a lot of progress, but we need to keep pushing. So really would appreciate your help in that.
Thank you. Talby, anybody else have anything to comment about the captain? If not, Myla, was there any public comment cards presented?
No, none were submitted.
Very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of August 12th, 2021, safety and security meeting, the open meeting. Do I have a motion to place those minutes on file?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Have a roll call.
A voice vote sufficient.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose.
Ayes have it. Next on the agenda is the license monitoring program. Mr. Coran, you're there.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm presenting a request to authorize our president and CEO to award a contract to Embark Safety for license monitoring services. By State Development Safety Department is responsible for monitoring the driving records of our staff, both in regard to moving violations and drivers license status changes. A request for proposals for license monitoring services was issued on December 15th and advertised on ByState's iSupply portal. Only one proposal from Embark Safety was received in response to our solicitation. An evaluation team from our safety department scored Embark Safety's proposal according to the technical evaluation criteria specified in the solicitation package. The review determined that Embark's web-based application can track, archive, and report any moving violation activity, along with the time and date stamp of the client's acknowledgement of any incidents. And Embark's proposal meets our requirements for continuously monitoring driving records and license status. The contracting officer in procurement did survey potential sources that chose not to submit a proposal, and three companies' responses are included in your briefing paper. One firm simply declined to participate, another firm did not submit the required documents, and the third felt that the scope of services did not pertain to its organization. You note that Embark Safety's proposal is lower in price than both the independent cost estimate and Embark's previous contract with ByState for these same services. Management recommends that the Safety and Security Committee accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for final approval this request for a five-year contract for license monitoring services with Embark Safety at an amount not to exceed $129,279. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What exactly does service, you know, provide?
So anytime that someone that works here, it's 1,983 employees total that are being monitored. If there's a moving violation, if they're speeding, if they get a ticket, if they have any type of moving violation in terms of operating people, this is outside of Metro, too. That has to be noted because it is a safety concern. Also, if license expires or failure to renew and things of that nature, we'd also be notified. And from a safety standpoint, we need to make sure that everybody's properly licensed.
So it's more for our employees, really?
Yes, it's for our employees.
Okay.
Two questions. How often, I mean, does this program pay for itself basically? I mean, do we catch a lot of employees not reporting? And I'm sure there's probably a policy that requires an employee to report any moving violations.
So this is going to be done automatically and has been because Embark has provided the service in the past. And Commissioner, I apologize, I'm not sure that I could speak to how many violations there, there have been in the past that have been caught by this methodology. Perhaps if Andrew Giassi is available, he might be able to comment on that.
Yes, good morning. I'll jump in. Morning Commissioners. Thank you, Tom, for the briefing regarding the program. But the program is very essential because it provides a real-time notification of a license error or a license that is invalid to also include our commercial driver licenses. So, you know, back to the question of, does it catch it ahead of time? Absolutely, it catches it in real time. Sometimes it catches it sooner than the employee gets notified via mail that their license has become invalid. So we actually have that real-time approach. Our supervisors reach out to the employee immediately, pull them from operating any vehicle of ByState until they get their license back to a valid compliance state. So it is a very useful tool from a safety perspective.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions regarding the license monitoring program?
And the 129,000, that's for five years?
Yes, the cost is essentially a dollar fifty per employee for these checks. So that is a five-year cost. There's also a state fee that's involved, but it's fairly minor.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
So can I get a motion approving the request for the license monitoring program?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
More seconds?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. You have a roll call, Myler, just a aye vote.
Just a voice vote's fine.
Correct. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Ayes have it. Next is the update on the Chestnut Health Project, and Kevin, I think that's you again.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for the benefit of our new commissioner. By the way, Commissioner Moore, welcome to the group. Looking forward to working with you. I want to give a, just a very high altitude history of the Chestnut program, how it started, and then talk about the expansion into Civic Center in North Hanley. As all of you are familiar, St. Clair County Transit District initiated a pilot program in partnership with Chestnut Health Systems back in April of 2020 to influx a clinical presence on the MetroLink system. And what that pilot program looked like was a team of two counselors from Chestnut Health riding and engaging our customer base on the system to bring and to provide and to connect services that we as an organization, quite frankly, from a public safety standpoint, cannot or not qualified to do. So it is, was a step to support or complement an overall public safety structure. There are a number of individuals who frequent the system that are in need of outside services, and this will help to mitigate and to support the overall improvement of security, all while bringing services to the system. And so again, that pilot program started in April of 2020 within the St. Clair County Transit District. Ken Sharkey was very instrumental in establishing this relationship and building this pilot. And we always knew that there was a need to provide a similar service as we looked at the professionalization of public safety, and I think that's what is key here is everything that we've done over the last two and a half years, meaning from the reconfiguration of, of security to the implementation of technology to programs such as Chestnut hinges on a true professional approach and a true systematic approach. And that's what this pilot established in St. Clair County. As we watched this, it became ever more important to provide an expansion to that business model. We are, we operate within three major political subdivisions, obviously, but we are one fluid system. So it's important that the services that we provide are consistent through, throughout the entire alignment. So we, we came to the board, as you recall, and we asked for an expansion of the program to the tune of $353,000 for a one-year pilot to expand into Missouri. And those, this expansion would differ a little bit from the business model in St. Clair County in that our expansion into the Civic Center in North Hanley would focus on those two static locations. Those two major transit centers were both primary modes of transportation feed into the customer base is interwoven. They exchange customers routinely, and so we felt like the biggest impact would be, be static at those locations. So we worked to build that expansion. And on February 7th of this year, we did a soft opening at Civic Center. So we have a two-person Chestnut team assigned to the Civic Center Transit Center. The administrative oversight, the collection of data, the build-out of the quantitative story and the qualitative story will all be married with the St. Clair County Transit Project because it's, it's one true effort. But that's, that Civic Center team has started, and we are working to hire and expand to the North Hanley site. We have an additional person hired. We have one person on that two-person North Hanley team hired, and Chestnut's working to hire the second person. And so within the next 30 to 60 days, we hope to have both of those transit centers staffed with our Chestnut team. Now, what is, what is important about this is again, this is a married program in that the administrative oversight, the leadership that oversees the St. Clair County, the original pilot program there, oversees the program and the expansion here. It has gone very well. It is going to make a true impact, but what's most important to me about this program and the success of it is we have to tell the quantitative and qualitative story moving forward. And I, along with, with our leadership within public safety here and the Chestnut leadership team, met with some outside resources yesterday that could help us build that, both on the quantitative side and the qualitative side moving forward. We want to expand this program by pursuing outside funding. There are many grant opportunities within the industry to help expand the totality of the entire program, not just at Civic Center and North Hanley, but the totality of the entire program. And so I'm extremely excited about it. Now, I can tell you this, but once again, I want to extend an invitation for you to actually come and see it. So Andrew Giassi and I have opened up our public safety component here, both on the security side and the safety side. Anybody that wants to come in and embed themselves with our team and see what we're doing, whether it's the implementation of 99 recommendations made by WSB, or it's how we deploy our resources, how we're trying to balance our security resources between MetroLink and MetroBus. And this is another opportunity to come and embed yourself with elements of our Chestnut contingent, either in the St. Clair County Transit District or at the Transit Centers in Missouri. So the way this looks now is currently there are three teams of Chestnut counselors. One team is in St. Clair County, one team will be at Civic Center, and one team is going to be at North Hanley. And it's my understanding that there is a, a push or a movement to expand the St. Clair County team into two teams as well to have more coverage on that side of the alignment. I actually get goosebumps when I talk about this program because a traditionalist in law enforcement, I am not. I grew up in law enforcement, in the public safety industry for 27 years, but I am far from a traditionalist. My team are far from traditionalists. What we understand is that true public safety is holistic, it's comprehensive, it is well-rounded, and there is a place for law enforcement. There is a place for a security component. But there are also programs such as what we're trying to build with Chestnut that are vitally important to the progression of sound public safety on the metro transit system. So again, please, if you have any interest in this program at all and would like to see it firsthand, meet the staff, understand the dynamics of what we're trying to build, what the future funding opportunities are for this program, please let me know. Our teams would be more than happy to see you and engage you and answer your specific questions. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back and would be happy to answer any follow-up questions.
Any questions for Mr. Scott on the Chestnut Hill?
Chairman Simmons, I have a question. It's Deborah Moore. Are the counselors in a physical office and they also ride the train and, and sort of make themselves available? You know, at, at the points of entry, or how, how exactly are they engaged? You know, understanding that the, the informs the quantitative, but how are, how are they engaged?
Yes, ma'am. So it's, it's a proactive engagement. So they don't sit and wait for customers to come to them. They're actively out, proactively engaging. So let's just go back to the, the initial business model within the St. Clair County Transit District. That two-person team actually rides the system, the MetroLink. And they actively engage. They, a lot of their engagements are onsite. They, and they run across individuals who they feel could use some support, and they'll engage conversations and build relationships. The same proactive engagement will take place at the Civic Center in North Hanley. What, what should not be dismissed here or missed in this conversation is from the Chestnut program to how we use security, to how we use the police, everything is a customer-based or community-based approach. It's building relationships. It's getting to know the areas of coverage, who frequents those areas, what are the dynamics that we face? It's a community-based policing model. We don't, we don't hang our hat on policing. We hang our hat on overall security and public safety. But the dynamics are the same, and this program, this proactive engagement by these clinicians complement that customer-based or community-based, getting to know the fabric of the customers that ride the system, getting to know the true issues. And if we continue to build on the platforms that we've built on for the last two and a half years to include this program, you will see a true mitigation and repetitive issues on this system.
Thank you.
Kevin, let's talk of the, the finances there, that $353,000 that was approved for that. What is going to be the increase for the Hanley part of that?
That's included, sir. That was for both, both Transit Centers.
Okay. So when we talk about, and where does that funds come from now currently?
So the 353,000 for Civic Center in North Hanley, that was directly funded by ByState.
Okay, and as we've talked in the past, and I know you said earlier that there's some grant funding opportunities out there, I would ask that if we get to the point that we're going to start applying for that, that, that St. Clair County portion of what we're paying for Chestnut be rolled into that also?
Without question. So my vision for this is, and I know that Ken was very instrumental in this, but my vision is to mold this into one program. And, and I've gotten to know through my relationship with Chestnut Leadership and with engaging other people within this industry, the mental health and the healthcare industry, there are opportunities out there. But one of my first priorities, along with Jim Wallace and the leadership team from Chestnut, is to professionalize how we maintain that data. Okay, we need to show true impact of this, of this program, both as one, as a one collaborative approach, through a professional collaboration to, to show the quantitative and the qualitative impact. And so we're hoping to push that out and build that platform. When we do that, I will come back and provide you examples of how we're doing that. I will give you updates. But that, that step is going to be essential to securing future grant funding for the program.
Very good. I understand that. Like I said, I just, if we're paying for that portion in Missouri on those two locations, I just want to make sure that we don't forget about the pilot program that got started over here. I'd love to be able to roll that all into the one funding package.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Any other questions for Kevin on that project? Very good. Moving on, item number eight, the camera feeds and bandwidth in St. Clair County. Mr. Roach?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to talk briefly and then hand over to Mr. Curry just for a technical update. So this was actually, and Chair Simmons, thank you for this initiative. What it was, it was to try to look a little bit out of the box and provide the camera feeds directly to several of the PSAPs in, to the law enforcement agencies in St. Clair. And the team did jump on that. However, there is a problem with the, with the band feeds, with the quality of the data moving over. So we have established the connection, but the band feeds are not rigorous enough in order to really complete the project. So we're continuing to move forward on those individual issues. I have asked Mr. Curran to advance through materials management, some advanced orders because of the importance from a security standpoint of this really great idea. But in conjunction with that, and in conjunction with the push, I asked Darren to be on the line today so that he could speak to you directly about some of those technical aspects. Mr. Curry, can you take it?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. So what we have is a need to increase the bandwidth, actually throughout the alignment. So this will occur throughout the alignment, but we decided to go ahead and target this area, which will go ahead and assist with the 911. So what we, what we're doing is we're installing a, it's called an extram. So basically, it takes all the data or information and, and pushes it and/or distributes it accordingly. So throughout the system, we have nodes that do that, and, and so that's typically think about it as the last mile, so to speak. So as things are moving through the network, the fiber, the last mile, so to speak, push is what is called a node. And that's where you'll hear us refer to it as extram. So that is currently what we have on order, parts for that. We do have good fiber all the way to Fifth and Mo, meaning Phase One was a 96 strand, more robust fiber. From Fifth and Mo to Emerson, we will have to, and it'd be another project, but it will not impact the 911 center. So somewhere over the course, couple of years, we will replace that. But fortunately, at Fifth and Mo is where we step off, and so we're, we've looked at that and heard that was what Commissioner Simmons, that was one of the things I was concerned with. So we're on the backside of it, so we're good. So once we get the parts in, components, we believe it'll be about a two-week lead time, I mean, install time. So as soon as they arrive, we'll be able to jump right on it.
Very good. And just to update the other commissioners that are with us today, the, the program is, is going to allow us to have camera feed into the four 911 centers here in St. Clair County. We have them currently at the Sincom East in Belleville, where the 911 telecommunications are able to monitor the platforms and the parking lots. My vision was to have all that same capability in O'Fallon, Belleville, and in Sincom West. In fact, I held a meeting with the chiefs from O'Fallon and Belleville, came in and showed them the camera situation in our center here. They were very excited about it. In fact, just with that one center, we've had documented about five different incidents where the telecommunications have been able to assist the law enforcement on those platforms of some calls that have came in. So I think it's another tool in our toolbox that I'm hoping that eventually, and Mr. Roach and I have talked, and Mr. Scott, that eventually this program will lead to go across the entire system because my understanding, and Darren, and I think we talked, this will be the only, the 911 centers that will have this capability here in St. Clair County.
Yes, and also Commissioner, I'd like to, a little update. We've started construction at our Compton Spruce Facility, what we call the main shop. And so that'll be for our real-time camera center, and it's also our intent to move public safety dispatch. So that project is underway. First, we have to do the refurbishment of the spaces. And then part of the package that Mr. Roach had presented does have the video management system. So that is actually the, the head-in piece for the new upgrade of the entire camera system.
Very good. Any questions on the camera feeds and the bandwidth that you just described, what they're working on? Very good. Thank you for your report. Thank you, Mr. Roach. This time, any unscheduled business, Mr. Roach?
We have no unscheduled business. I can go into the president's report if you're ready.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So I, I just can't help but dovetail onto that effort. So, and Captain, since we have you on the line, as you know, those video feeds to 911 centers, these, this is about resources and collaboration. This is just an example of putting good heads together with established relationships on how to move technology, and in this case, camera feeds right to the very heart of law enforcement agencies to 911 centers as, as an example. This idea was championed, of course, by Chair Simmons. He won't take credit for it, but that is where this idea is coming from. But by convening groups like this, this is how we get ideas and move them forward. So I just want to thank him again for that effort. But also, let's, let's talk about an update on Secure Platforms Project. So I will say, and I want to be, I'm very excited that we, I have completed 10.7 million dollars of private sector funding has been pledged A ten-point-seven million dollars of private sector funding has been pledged and it, and some of it, as a matter of fact, is. Is in Bi-State. We have pledges and, and our general counsel has. Has reviewed those documents and several of those have actually come in-house. Now we move to the next phase of Secure Platforms Project and that is. A design. So a design team will be put together and that will include representatives from the various jurisdictions. As an example, I've reached out to St. Clair County if they want to house somebody on that. Review committee on the type of gates, et cetera, the design as we move through each individual stations. So we will engage in that contract immediately. Then the next phase is, as, as you'll see very shortly in the Audit and Finance. Meeting coming up in the eighteenth, we will present FY twenty-three budget. Well, while I'm doing my FY twenty-three budgets, I will also be submitting to each funding jurisdiction, the general funding plan for Secure Platform Project. You did see my preliminary estimates associated with that, with that presentation, which included a general cost of fifty-two million dollars. Then it showed what all of the funding tranches will be. So I will present that formally to the public sector partners. Including the city, St. Clair County and St. Louis County. And each jurisdiction will have their opportunity to. Bring input to Secure Platform Project at that time. I'm very optimistic as the project is coming in. And all of the initial projections with raising money, et cetera, is rigorous and good. We already have advanced funding in St. Louis County for this project that is sitting associated with a. Boundary finance that we completed roughly eighteen months ago. We are holding that money right now. Our only promise with St. Louis County at the time was that we would wait to use that money on safety and security. I do need to make the same presentation to St. Clair County, give them an update. And they need to be sure that they are embedded into this design and review process as we figure out how the gates and systems work at each individual stations. So we are proceeding with, with the project. I do plan to. Talk to the internal team to name a specific project manager associated with Secure Platform Project. In other words, someone who can coordinate all of these different aspects, including safety and security. The engineering and then also talking with our local partners about what the design looks like. This is going to be a major change to MetroLink and so it needs a long investment, both from a security standpoint, but also a design standpoint. The curb appeal of what we are offering is going to change radically and so we need to be sure that it is planned properly. One of the aspects of that, which is new to what, what we have been putting forth. Is that security, in other words, represented by Mr. Giassi and Mr. Scott, will be embedded into that process. Part of bringing forth an idea of professionalization all through our different disciplines. Is being sure that law enforcement is represented in every aspect of design and looking at all aspects of our system. I also want to mention that as I sent an email out to you, we are experimenting, doing a pilot program with a single car. Train set and that'll be going on in the next two weeks. It's really actually pretty exciting because one of the aspects that we looked at as far as safety and security was by having a single car, quite frankly. It's easier for us to secure and to monitor, just that simple. And heretofore. Every time we had, it was. Deemed quote impossible to look at a single car consist before, but it is not impossible. The idea is, is that, look, the world has changed around us. The city has changed radically. What we have to do is be sure that we have the courage to change. The courage to change either, for instance, with Secure Platforms Project, but even in our rolling stock, that we're looking at things differently. So that the product that we're offering to the citizens is the product that they want. One that it is cost-effective, that is clean and secure. And even if that means that we're moving maybe to a single car consist, we should be looking at new ideas and see how they work. Now I will mention that although you'll see, much more commonly see those single cars. There are some, for instance, rush hour periods that we know a double car needs to stay in place because that's what the ridership demands. So we're being very careful to try to tune that. I'm really looking forward to looking at it. And I think you will be pleased with the results. That concludes my president's report, Chair, unless there are some questions of what I just mentioned.
Any questions for Mr. Roach at this time?
Just a comment. I'm glad that we're doing the, the single car. I know I brought it up maybe two years ago. But anyway, I think it's a good idea and see how it works. And, and you know me too, I'm excited about the, the Secure Platform Plan. Just ready to see, start seeing it, you know, and so I know you guys are working back there and so thanks for that update.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other?
If I may, Commissioner Chair Simmons, I appreciate, I, I feel like a bit, still from an outsider, you know, but from an outsider. A former heavy user of the system, I always wondered why. There was not a single car and, and access limited because it would. I mean, just obviously improve security and encourage ridership. So I am. Happy to see that coming online.
Well, Commissioner, if I, if I may just, this is an anecdotal example, but when we were doing the soft rollout on Chestnut Health. We, we did that down at the Civic Center. Of course, all of our law enforcement partners were all there. And of course, frequently they come by and talk to me. City, county, everyone came up to me and because that was very shortly after we did the single cars associated with the ice storm. And they. All of them, all these professionals commenting on how just that simple change as far as being able to cover from a security standpoint. Really made a big difference. And also the message that, that we could send. To our law enforcement community that we were responding to their request. Okay? So it's one thing to listen, but there's another thing to take action. In other words. One of the things that I'm trying to do and be prompted by you all as commissioners. Is make some of those changes that the public is asking for. Try to be aggressive. Look, we, we have to admit that we have some changes to make and some improvements to make. Commissioner Moore, you made, you made this very eloquent to me when we talked personally about you coming on. You felt more comfortable in the past being on MetroLink and don't feel as comfortable right now. We need to listen to those voices and, and think very carefully about what is our product and how can we make it better and how can we make people feel more comfortable?
Very good. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Roach? If not, we need to have the future dates for the board meetings and committee meetings.
Yes, Chair, the next Operations Committee meeting will be held on Friday, March eighteenth at eight-thirty AM. Followed by the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee on the same day, March eighteenth. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, April twenty-second, also at eight-thirty AM.
Very good. Thank you. And this time I need a motion to go into an executive session. Is that correct, Myla?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's to discuss confidential and privileged matters pursuant to Bi-State Development Board Policy Number Ten. Section ten eighty under the closed record security under. Section eleven, is that correct?
Yes, and section D sixteen rail busts and facility safety and incidents.
Motion to go into executive session. And a second.
More second beaches motion.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons? Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
And the motion passed.
Very good. Seeing if you may. Hey, we're back at the regular meeting. Have a roll call.
We will need a motion in a second to approve those minutes.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the. A executive session of the Security Safety Meeting from August the twelfth?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Enter roll call. Myra?
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Very good. Thank you. No other business coming? The only thing I'd like to say is, Myra, I'd like to just thank you for the fine work you do on all these committee meetings, keeping us all straight and keeping us online.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Good day, everybody.